All those meeting in order of the four Franklin County Commissioners Wednesday, May 18th, 2022, May 30, AM, roll call.
Mr. Stottemeyer?
President.
Commissioner Harris?
President.
Chair Dunn?
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Okay, if you'd all please stand for the pleasure allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Commission. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Author John Maxwell said, "As the challenge escalates, the need for teamwork elevates." So, the tougher the decision, the bigger the challenge, the more we need the wisdom and experience of everybody in the room. So, with that, I'd like to pray. And Lord, thank you for today. Bible says this is the day that you have made, so we're going to be thankful for it and rejoice in it. Thank you for a great team of people that you've assembled here to bring blessing and leadership to this community. And I pray your blessing to lead and guide their decisions, to lead and guide their hearts, to lead and guide their steps. We thank you that you love us and that you are for us. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You got a correspondence, Derek?
No, sir.
We have the proclamation for Memorial Day, and Ian Dickinson's going to read it at this time.
Proclamation 2203, National Peace Officer Memorial Day and Police Week is the May 11th to the 17th of 2022. Whereas, there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, nearly 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including Deputy Samuel A. Smith of the Franklin County Sheriff's Office on July 23rd, 2010. And whereas, 619 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 472 officers killed in 2021 and 147 officers killed in previous years. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their sheriff's office, and that members of our sheriff's office recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, members of the Franklin County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Franklin County citizens. And whereas, May 15th of each year is designated as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners formally designates May 11th to 17th, 2022, as Police Week in Franklin County, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Signed this 18th day of May 2022 by Roy Dunn, Commission Chair.
Thank you, Ian. I made a mistake there. Police Office Memorial Day. Sheriff Richards, would you like to say a few words?
Morning. Thank you for acknowledging the proclamation this morning. Typically, we would do it this week because typically the way that the law worked on it is whatever calendar week that May 15th was in, it would be Police Week. But because it was on Sunday this year, they kind of changed things up, and this year, the week went from Wednesday to Tuesday. Don't know really why, but that's what they did. But also in honor of the families and for those that have made the sacrifice, as the proclamation says, in Franklin County, we do also have a memorial scholarship for Sam Smith in his honor. And tonight, I will be presenting two of those to graduating seniors from Ottawa High School. And so, it kind of works out kind of neat as to how the timing of that works. But so, with that, I just want to say thank you again for issuing the proclamation. And it means a lot to me and our staff for that appreciation. Thank you.
Actually, these numbers are not very good because...
That is correct.
It's not been 36 years, and it's been 23,000. But in the last one year, it's been almost 500. That's huge.
That's correct. There were several of them during 2021 were still COVID deaths. Although assaults and ambushes on law enforcement have also been increasing over the past couple of years, so we have seen more deaths to homicide. But most of those are going to be COVID deaths from 2021. 2020 was the highest on record, and then '21 unfortunately broke that record, so.
Yes, unfortunate that we have at this time an increase in law enforcement, outstanding other activities against law enforcement. So, it's nice to recognize the work law enforcement does, especially in Franklin County with the Sheriff's Department and City of Ottawa Police Department. Thank you for coming in.
Roy, I would echo that. And I said this last week, but you really put yourself in their shoes, and I don't think people do that often enough. But honestly, put yourself in law enforcement's shoes and think about what they have to endure on a daily basis. What for me or for most of us would be the worst day of our lives, they see on a daily basis. And I can't imagine the psychological toll that that takes and the strength that it takes to do that job day after day, month after month, year after year. And I do think that we're fortunate to have a lot of good law enforcement officers here in Franklin County, both with the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department. So, certainly, Jeff, I thank you and thank your staff for all that you do.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, let's make this official a motion.
Don't move.
Yeah?
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire? Chair Dunn?
Yes. Does this sound like public comment today? A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Janet?
Gene Hurt?
You moved to Franklin County now, Gene?
What?
Have you moved to Franklin County now?
No.
No?
Nope. I have not moved back to Franklin County.
Okay, what does he have from neighboring county?
Well, let me tell you. I'm not in Osage anymore either now. I moved out of there, and I'm in Coffee County at Lebo. Now, I'm here to talk about a couple of issues for what you have over here and not dwell on them too much. But I know every one of you sitting up there and behind that desk. And I'm thankful to see, Mr. Dunn, that you got to be chairman again. So, okay, all right. Now, Proximity Park. You know, where I'm at over there now, see, we have the wind power turbines at Redding, and we also have them over down by Waverly. It goes down to Burlington. And there's going to be more. More is coming. One thing about Coffee County, of course, then the power plant is going to be redone, and money given into it to improve it more. But they do things a lot different there than they do anywhere else I've seen. And it's a great place to live because I don't have to worry about no potholes in the streets because they don't have manholes in the streets. And so, they're improving immensely. And after I've been over there a while, they've asked me, said, "You come from Franklin County, haven't you?" And I said, "Yeah, I have." Said, "Now, you keep asking me since I moved there since six months ago, what's going on with Proximity Park?" I said, "Well, not much. Unfortunately, it's been sitting there for a while, cost close to, and maybe a little exaggeration, $50 million." You know, they laugh at you. I'm telling you here now to all of you. They're laughing at you because you haven't done anything with it. People over here are upset too of my people I know and want visiting them. What are you going to do? You've had, when I was around here, you had prospects, but there's nothing out there. I drove through it this morning, nothing. So, I'm just here to tell you that, so let you know that they're laughing at you unfortunately. Now, the next thing is Mr. Harris out there in your area in the Second District where I lived, nowhere at Wentzburg for many years, and live down by Emerald. There he is right now on the west side of Wentzburg, and the facility is just in Osage County. It's going to be that kill plant that was discussed mainly a long time ago. And there's a reason why they just put that thing in Osage and not Franklin. But the problem of it is, though, when that thing opens, there's a lot of people out there never were talked to or discussed with that they were wanting to put out there. And so, what's going to happen is the traffic's going to get real bad coming into Wentzburg. And there are some people that knew what was coming today to address this. And I think you better all have a good idea taking care of the roads because, you know, it's too bad it's in Osage, but there's a reason why they didn't put it in Franklin. And I think you all know why. So, with all of that, that's all I had today. Thank you.
Okay, the consent agenda for today is consider and approve plane vouchers in the amount of $1,491,576.83. Tax change orders, $28.00. We got emergency vehicle permit approved. Meeting minutes for May 11th and meeting minutes for study session on May 16th. I entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion approved. Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Yeah, the first item after this, we're going to discuss expansion of Franklin County Veterans Memorial. Derek, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, thanks. So, my cover sheet kind of speaks for itself on this. From time to time, and I don't get these calls a ton, but Roy, I know you do. I think Brandon has too, actually. We get calls from folks who want to purchase bricks at the Veterans Memorial. But if you go down there, you'll see that while there are blank bricks, there's very much a pattern. And certainly, the pattern has significance, and you could talk more about that than I could, Roy. But we're kind of out of room at this point. And so, just wanted to discuss options, if there is a desire on behalf of the five of you to expand that memorial. If so, how you want to go about that. Certainly, there are, you know, architects that could design such a thing. I would tell you, you know, that whole property, the Veterans Memorial, the old courthouse is obviously cherished in this community. So, whatever we do, I want to make sure we do it well and that we give ample thought and consideration to it. And so, that's how I would open it up. And Roy, do you want to share your thoughts on it?
Yes, I'll go ahead and add on to what Derek said. Like a lot of people have asked me about purchasing bricks for the memorial. That memorial was dedicated in 1999, so it's been almost 22 years now that it's existed. And of course, we've had a lot of, you know, military activity since 1999. And the design, the original design of that memorial was the patterns of the brick were kind of a Native American design where each family could put a brick or buy bricks in a block or singly, but they wouldn't touch any other bricks. And that was kind of a Native American method of honoring their people. And that was the design of the three walkways at the memorial. And the original people that put together the memorial are very adamant that that should not be altered at all, that pattern, because that's the way it originally was designed, and that's what it was for. And now, we've had 20, over 20 years of use of those bricks, and they're, of course, worn down and something like that. So, it's my desire to have another location that would be a new field of bricks for anybody that wants to honor not only veterans but have some sort of military connection to honor a loved one or something like that. And my first thoughts was the green area just south of the memorial, parallel to Forest Street. And that would be, I think, a good place to start. I talked to Sherri Wright, one of the original people involved in the activities doing the fundraising for the memorial. And she was, she's willing to help with anything that this commission decides to do. Originally, the memorial was completely funded by private donations and selling bricks, and that's how it was funded. And the regional committee that put this together were looking throughout Ottawa, Franklin County for a place for the memorial. And the commissioners at that time went ahead and let them use that, you know, southwest corner as long as it complied with the Kansas Historical Society's rules and regulations as far as the courthouse is, it's on the historical record, registration for a historical building. And they got that approved once they saw the design of the memorial. It was approved. And the funds were that they were donated and collected, and volunteers had donated their time to do the memorial, completed the project. And then, not too many years ago, they completed the last plaque on the wall. So, all the funds have been depleted. The organization turned the corner over to Franklin County to let us basically maintain it, and that's what we've done ever since. In the case, we do get donations from the service clubs or individuals to help maintain it. But it's been our maintenance crew that's done an excellent job of maintaining the memorial. I liked Derek's introduction. Several of us have got requests for utilizing those bricks that are there. There's nothing that's printed on them. I says, "Why don't we do that?" And that's what my explanation was, that it has a design, it's kind of goes back to Native Americans, and now we honor their people, their warriors, their people. So, that's why I approached Derek and wanted to put it on the agenda, that I think it's appropriate time to try to do something for the people who have requested purchasing brick and have another field of bricks somewhere on that location. And it would be appropriate and be compatible with the Historical Society. And it probably needs a conceptual or architect to design something that would be appropriate, compatible with that corner. That's all I have.
Okay. What if, instead of, you know, keep adding to the memorial, we keep adding to every time, you know, something like this comes up, we started going down Forest Street, like some of the city sidewalk that should have added a pathway just to put names on the bricks. We used like Forest Street where there is a need for sidewalk anyways, and got permission from the city to replace, start replacing panels that connect to the memorial. And that way, you'd have ample room to grow, and you would have already, there's a need for a pathway there, and it'd be utilized, I guess, too. And we would have the maintenance, I guess, for additional maintenance. We need a sidewalk anyways, needs to be cleared anyways and all that.
Yeah, that's a, you know, that's a design, the discussion is to come up with ideas on what would be...
We wouldn't lose any green space. We wouldn't lose any grass, any lawn, any things like that.
Is there a desire on the part of the board to at least explore architects or someone to look at potential designs? And certainly, Colt's design as our proposal is a viable option. Do you want to bring somebody in to, I mean, I will tell you, I feel like the courthouse lawn has gotten progressively busier a little bit, just, you know, with, especially on that west side by Main, all the boxes and stuff up there. It's a major distraction. I, and I think a professional could probably take all of that into consideration. It just depends on how much time, effort, and resources would like to put into it. But I do believe that the, I mean, we receive the requests for additional bricks, so I think it would be nice to accommodate those requests, certainly.
I talked to Sherri Wright, and she'd be willing to be part of a group that would, would, you know, help with the public opinion on what to do. And I talked to service organizations, and they're willing to, you know, put their opinion in also on it. But I talked to Sherri yesterday, and she, she gave me the name of the original architect for the memorial, and I can't remember right now. But there's still several around. Larry Larkin did the masonry work, and Kenny Van De Vetter did the concrete work there. So, there's people around from the original group that put this together. So, I think we could have a group that could get together. But I think we need to have a conceptual architect to come up with some proposals or plans or drawings. So, I think that's kind of where it stands right now is to start there and then to see what could be developed.
And then you have to think about if you want to put more work in. I mean, I was just thinking, have you ever been down to Anderson County and seen their veterans memorial? Can you put a name in and look them up and get the information on them? And, you know, it's more than just a brick with a name on it. I don't know. How much money do you put into bricks or if you're going to put money into it? I don't know.
Well, the original bricks were $80.
Well, I know.
Back then, they were.
Yeah.
And that helped pay for the memorial, the cost of the bricks.
Kind of, now, it 15, 16, 17 years, nobody's been able to really do anything. It just kind of stayed like it was. And like Roy, it seemed like two or three years after it was completed, it was full and done. And so, a lot of things has happened over the last 15, 16 years. And I know this subject has come up several times, and we haven't really got together on how to move forward or to do it. I think it'd be very valuable to have someone look at it and tell us what they, their ideas, you know, somebody professional or maybe even the same company, or raise a comment to another company. I know there's several memorials that have been up around different counties. Anderson County just put theirs in. And so, I'm sure there's other architects that specialize in that type of thing if they're not available anymore. So, I'd be willing to move forward and see what we could do.
Well, and if that were the board's desire, I wouldn't, at this phase, engage with an architect. It would be more reaching out to them to see, you know, what the cost associated with doing some kind of design or brainstorming would be. And then, it would come back to you for your decision on whether or not you wanted to do it. Basically, what I'm looking for today is, is there a desire for us to at least reach out and make contact with names, architects, that, you know, we'll call down to Anderson, we'll call around to some others, try and get names, and then reach out. Is there at least that much desire on the board's part?
For me, it's our cost, I assume.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't know, Roy, if you know of any groups that would donate to the cause. I will tell you, and I've said it before, I think the old courthouse and that property is, I mean, it's arguably the preeminent tourist destination in Franklin County. And we see people walking out and looking at the Veterans Memorial. That would be an appropriate use of TGT funds if you wanted to do that. So, it wouldn't necessarily have to be at Valorem. But outside of Roy knowing of, you know, organizations that would be willing to donate and help, I mean, we could try to fundraise for it certainly in some way, but...
I think the service, service organizations would contribute to a study. I know the non-veterans of America, they voted to help fund a, help fund with, help with a memorial in some way. There's only one way they could help. So, there is that goal. There's that out there, too. Sounds like there's a need.
My only thought would be, I hope we kind of decide now that whatever we ultimately do doesn't take away any more lawn or green space or obstruct the view any further.
Yeah, that's kind of my idea, not to take away any more green space, but also add that opportunity to what people can add to the memorial.
On a similar, it's not entirely related, but same property, if we're going to look at this and potentially make some modifications, I'm just, I'm going to throw this out there again, because I know Brandon's received a quote. I know he's excited about it. We have gotten a quote from Bones Landscaping to irrigate and continue the beautification of that courthouse property. So, not asking for a decision on that, but if we were, I agree with not taking up any more green space, but depending on what those designs look like, it might be something worth considering on the board's part if there's interest. I mean, I think that certainly Bones' proposal would make it lower maintenance for our staff. And so, it's just, it's this time of year, you go down there, and it's beautiful. Springtime's never a problem. It's just as spring turns to summer and things brown out and die, and that's when we've got a lot of folks out on the street corners just trying to maintain that. Just something to think about. You know, we talk about, you know, partnering with the city and wanting to make an investment in the city. What better way than right in the heart of downtown, you know, on that property? So, just something to think about. What better way than right in the heart of downtown, you know, on that property? So just something to think about. As we continue through this process. Any other thoughts on the, the veterans memorial? Cause what I'm hearing is, yeah, go ahead and start reaching out, trying to, you know, interview, so to speak, some architects and then bring something back for, for you all at a later date.
I, I think you got a consensus there to go ahead and reach out. See what, see what we can find out.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, thanks.
Thank you all for discussing this. I appreciate that. Uh, next, uh, I'd have been to discuss the partnering with the city of Wellsville on a new ambulance station located within Wellsville city limits. Uh, Derek.
So you all are aware that, that I've met with, um, that Christie and I have met with staff from the city of Wellsville on multiple occasions. Um, just to give a brief overview, Wellsville has, uh, purchased a, a piece of property with a building on it. And they will soon begin the remodeling of that building and that will be their new police station. And that building will be served by all new infrastructure. Um, it's right off of thirty-three there in Wellsville, over in that area near Dollar General. Roads aren't in yet, but, but, you know, they're working on that and the state's obviously working on thirty-three right there. Um, we were approached about a potential partnership opportunity. As you know, currently we're kind of closer to downtown in, in a building that, um, we share with the fire department. It is not ideal at all. Um, you know, Christie's talked to you about that. Um, and, and I'm sure she'd be willing to come up and talk to you again, but it's not, we're appreciative, um, super appreciative that the city of Wellsville ha- has, um, given us that space because it's, you know, we're not paying for that. But it's also, it's upstairs. I mean, there are a number of, of issues with that. And so, um, this is an intriguing possibility for us. You know, we've kind of started loosely throwing around some proposals in terms of what it might look like. They have provided us with a quote, so they've already selected a contractor for the remodel. And I've let them know that if we were going to engage in this project, that we would require that they, um, go out for bids on the ambulance side of it, which they've of course agreed to. But the contractor that's doing their remodel has given a quote on what it would take to add the ambulance station to it. So existing building, they would be adding, uh, an ambulance station. This would be a two bay ambulance station. It would have four bedrooms in it, kitchen area. Um, it would allow for the growth that we all see coming in Wellsville. Um, and, and if you question whether or not Wellsville's growing, go to any of their city commission meetings. Like they have so much going on up there. Drive by Birch Truck Stop, like see how busy it is. Like look at the evaluations in that part of the county like that. We are growing in that area. So this would allow us, um, we wouldn't have to staff it immediately. I mean, we wouldn't have to put that second truck in there. Um, but it would allow for us to do that when, when we were ready. Um, the quote that we received, um, was four hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Wellsville and talking to them, they would actually like us to, to partner for five hundred thousand. And their rationale is they've got a lot of money into the land, into the building, into the infrastructure that is servicing that building. You know, they've talked about putting special tax districts over there for other companies that, that they anticipate coming. They're not going to ask us to participate in that or to pay any portion of that. Um, and I told them, you know, I, that, that's, obviously for us, that's an incredible amount of money. Um, you know, as you know, we have ARPA funds. Um, currently we have about four point five million dollars that is unencumbered. If, if we were to use that, that would bring us down to four. And we've also talked about defeating some debt with that money. Um, Janet and I discussed that yesterday. She reached out to our financial advisor. If you were to do that, that's going to be somewhere right around two point nine or three. So if that were, were of interest, then you would be down to about a million dollars of ARPA funds. Um, one of the things that, that I've talked to them about, and as I've shared with you, is dispatch. Um, that's a topic of discussion that comes up quite a bit. Um, is when is Wellsville going to start contributing to our dispatch costs? So we know the city of Ottawa contributes, uh, to our personnel costs. So I told them that I don't know how the board's going to feel. Um, but I think it would be certainly at least more palatable if you started, if Wellsville started contributing to dispatch. And so we ran some numbers, um, seven percent of the population of Wellsville, or seven percent of the Franklin County population is in Wellsville. And so we looked at what would seven percent of the dispatch budget be? Of this current year's budget, that would be about fifty-six thousand dollars. You know, we're anticipating increases in personnel costs. So if you look at twenty twenty-three projections, that goes up somewhere between sixty and sixty-five. But in discussing that with them, they indicated that they would be willing, starting in twenty-three. Um, tentatively speaking, this is their staff talking. This hasn't went to their board for approval. But they would consider paying fifty thousand, starting in twenty-three, fifty thousand and twenty-four. And then starting in twenty-five, paying the, the, you know, their population percentage of that budget. So as their population grows, they would contribute more. Just looking at numbers, if, if we contributed five hundred thousand and they contributed fifty to dispatch, then obviously that's one way to look at that is that, you know, in that year, we will have, you know, that, take that fifty from that five hundred, you're at four fifty and you're under the quote that we've received to do this work, which again will obviously put out to bid. Not here asking you to make a decision today, but I am here to gather your thoughts and see where you would like staff to go from here. Christie, do you have anything to add to that? Anything that I am missing?
And in ten years we'd have it, we could actually definitely pay it off with fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, it won't take that long.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're going to grow and they will start, they, they just asked for a couple of years to continue to refine their budget.
That is just for, so that doesn't include furnishings, uh, carpeting, uh, furniture, kitchen, kitchen furnishing? That's just the bare bones?
It does.
Flooring.
Do what?
Carpeting.
They would do carpeting.
Yeah.
Be a moving space.
They, they've also said that, that the city's going to cover, um, or their proposal, again, this is just a propos- I mean, this is just staffs on both sides talking. There's nothing, nothing concrete here. I'm just, but they've indicated they would be willing to pay water. They would be willing to pay electric. They would be willing to pay sewer. And that would leave gas, which, you know, in the winter would be a bigger one. And then, yeah, our IT expenses, our furnishings. Um, and Christie, have you looked into that at all? Do you have any, no pressure, but do you have any idea yet on what? Yeah.
I do not.
Yeah, no, fair enough. And, and I've not asked her to, full disclosure, but, but yes, that would be an additional cost.
Another thing that brought this forward is, uh, fire department up there approached me a couple of years ago now probably. And they're in the process of building a new building or getting ready for funds to build a new building, which they would move out of that building. And, uh, so, and I know probably one of their thoughts is that we would go with them. But this, you know, probably would be a better scenario. And then that would allow the city, uh, their police department is, the police, it's unusable for years and years. And, uh, that would allow their public works to move in to the facility where the fire department, the ambulance is now. Be a great benefit to them on that scenario. You know, I'm not saying that helps us, but it's a kind of a roundabout, one thing helps another situation. So, uh, I know when we first went up there and the city allowed us to move in, I had no cause. That our numbers have doubled since that time. And I will, you hate to say it, because population's not that much, but numbers have doubled. And I could stand doing it again. And just like Derek said, there's not an attempt and, uh, to man is any different to what man is right now, as far as personnel and drugs at this moment. And so only thing we're thinking about is the future and the way things cost and things go up. We know if we're going to gas now is the time to gas. And if we have ARPA funds, then if we can get the offset with, I know the talk has been for a year on the night. And it's come up for twenty-eight. And that's, so we could get the money, but we could take nothing. So it's just, it's just a good conversation. I'm glad that, that the city and, and, uh, account has been with Max, Christie and, and, uh, I think they've been pretty forward about what they do and not do. And, and if yes, it's just a thought. We're going to, we're going to be in a position to have to do something to, to regard of the party that lives out there, too. City will, you know, we're kind of tied connection with our, our municipal, so it wouldn't be tied connection with public works. And, um, so we all, whole difference.
Their, their mayor's told me that they would like to use that building for public works. I mean, to be fair, and, and he, he's been so good to work with. He, he, he's, they're not gonna, he, he indicated to me, they're not going to kick us out. Um, but I know they would like to use that building for their growing public works department. And, and I think that you talk about nine-one-one and, and that's something a lot of people don't realize is part of that arrangement, part of why we haven't collected fees is because we've been getting a building up there for nothing. I mean, they're not charging us anything for it. So that's been the partnership. We have the space up there. They don't charge us and then we haven't charged them for their nine-one-one fees. Well, now that we're looking at building, it's just the perfect time. I mean, that we're gonna, um, if it's something the five of you want to do, we would contribute to that and then they would begin contributing to dispatch. So I, I, I think that, you know, there, a, any number of you on the board would know far, far better than me or have far better guesses at what building materials and the cost of, of goods is going to do moving forward. But I, I think it's indisputable that Wellsville is gonna grow. I mean, I think that's a fact. Wellsville is growing and, and I don't know that this is a fact, but I would speculate that, that the cost of things is only going to go up over the years. And so what is going to cost potentially, you know, four or five hundred thousand a day in five years, you're not going to be able to get for four or five hundred thousand, especially when you consider we're probably looking at having to acquire a piece of land on top of that and, and incur any other number of expenses that, that Wellsville would currently be covering. So.
Standalone building would be at least double that. Just by the time you bought land, site developments, infrastructure, there's no way lease double it. Is there any money in the ambulance fund after we, I guess, consider what our replacement costs are of vehicles? Obviously not to bear the whole cost, but.
I, I apologize. I did not bring the financial records with us. Uh, so at this point, I don't feel like I could adequately answer that without going back and reviewing.
But that's info we could have moments after the meeting. I mean, we'd want to do some analysis, but that's easy.
Obviously nowhere near all of it, but if maybe a little bit. And then, um, you'd said last meeting, how much time does this save you to get to I thirty-five?
About two minutes.
For each call? That goes that way, which a lot of them do, so.
And again, I, and that's a great question, Cole, and just, just, I just want to pause for a second and just think about that. Put yourself in that situation. You or someone you care about is having a heart attack or some kind of major health issue. We could get to thirty-five, two minutes quicker. I mean, that's.
Put you on thirty-three, so you're already on the highway to go north. Obviously you do go south, you're already on that highway at I thirty-five. And you're still in Wellsville.
That is correct.
Haven't diminished the service to those people either.
If you had a different contractor than they did, does that create any issues? If we put it out for a bidding with a, with a lower?
Um, I mean, I, I, I'm sure it wouldn't be ideal, but I also think that if we put this out for bid, and again, Cole, Rod, Don, any of you frankly would know this better than me. But to me, this, this firm that they are using, given that they're already going to be set up and mobilized, I would think that they're going to be able to make a pretty competitive bid. And, and, you know, there's probably a decent chance they would be the lowest, but if they're not, I don't, I don't know. I just think it'd mean they have to work together, which is, I would think easily doable.
You know who they're using?
It's a firm called Oakwoods Contracting.
There's another thing on that time deal. If the ambulance has to go south, there's a train going through there all the time.
Correct. We would not.
From your current location.
Yeah, and that, and there wouldn't be any of that at this new site. It would avoid the train, it'd go over the train. In fact, there wouldn't be no stopping of a, of a train. And if the train goes through there a lot.
Normally I think of, uh, ambulance and fire going together, but this would be ambulance and, uh, public safety going together in the same building. And like Don said, they're planning on building a new fire station somewhere. I don't know where, but, this partnership looks ideal to me because like Don said, we was looking at Wellsville when we first went up there for standalone building, approximately with same location where this is going to be right now. But then we chose to go to the, well, the public works fire department now and upstairs, which is, uh, not very conducive for, uh, having a service operated out of that upstairs, uh, facility there in Wellsville. So I think this is a good opportunity for us to, to team up with Wellsville and be part of the, uh, uh, public safety and the ambulance service together. Cause we do have mutual agreement with Miami County for that northwest corner or northwest corner of Miami County, service in there, probably Douglas County too, up in that corner of Douglas County. So having a, ambulance service there in Wellsville, it's, uh, um, like Derek said, always going to be more of a demand because of the population growth and the, and the new, uh, construction and everything going on up there. So I think, I think it's a good idea myself.
And please know, um, not asking, I, I'm asking basically if we're on the right track. I mean, this will all be memorialized in a formal agreement. It'll be a couple of different formal agreements. One for the partnership on the building, the other for the dispatch. So I, you're not, not asking you to take any legally binding action today, but, but I, I do- I, I do think if, if you're generally okay with the terms that we've thrown out, then we can start working towards refining those. But if there are concerns now would be an appro, again, it'll come back in front of you for a formal consideration and vote. But if there are concerns, now would be the time so that I can go back and discuss them with their staff and.
And they mentioned their, even if we don't, their investment they're making, dollar amount.
So yeah, that's a great question and, and this is according to their staff. I, I've not seen the paper trail associated with this, but according to their staff, they are going to be 1,240,000 into the project. That will be their investment. So 1.2 million and, and they're asking us to, to partner at the 500,000 level.
Does that include the purchase of the building itself?
I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure that is in that number.
I was there when they purchased the, the building in Atlantis, 300, I believe 360,000 for the, the one they're gonna remodel.
And, and again, their, their city commission could balk at this. I, this is, you know, this is just us continuing this discussion and letting you know, this hasn't went in front of their governing body, but it takes two and I just wanted to see where you guys were at.
I think my only concern would be that, that when we, the very ti, first time we even had inkling of this, I think the numbers were 300, 350 maybe, I don't remember exactly, but since it was a little less and, and it's grown, it keeps growing. I just don't want it to keep growing anymore.
Well, I think if we were to do this, we would say that we, cause we're not, it's going to be their project. Like we would say, we are willing to pledge this amount of money. And if the cost exceed that for whatever reason, I, I would envision that those risks fall on them, not us. So I think we just have to decide what amount we're willing to participate at. And if you want more funding information, like in terms of where we're at, we can absolutely get that. I mean, I've given you a brief ARPO overview. Christie can get the EMS reserves. I mean, we have general county reserves as well that could be used towards this. Um, I just think this is one of those projects that's a kinda tailor made for federal stimulus dollars, but certainly can understand there are a lot of projects and wanting to defray some of that with EMS reserves if it's possible. Think it's a very valid thought, so.
You imagine the taxpayer in Wellsville's point of view and the taxpayer and any other part of the county's point of view, I think it's as good a deal as, you know, somebody sitting in another part of the county understands that those people need ambulance coverage too. Um, this is absolutely as cheap as you're gonna be able to get that, uh, new building, a new facility built up there. Cause the old facility's undoubtedly at the end of its life. Uh, understanding that that's part of providing a service, this is a premium, uh, that you're gonna be able to, to do that at. And I think from somebody sitting in another part of the county, that's a, good a deals they're gonna get. So it's, it's a favorable, uh, outcome for them. Obviously somebody sitting in Wellsville, the taxpayer there's point of view is they're gonna get an improved service and again, an excellent value. So I think it's fair, um, no matter where you sit, so.
Okay. The other discussion, how about, about this?
What I'm generally hearing then is that you're okay with the terms as, uh, moving forward, refining a proposal based on these terms for future consideration.
Looks like a good synthesis, Derek.
Well, I, okay, well, I think that's what we needed. Um, I certainly admire your, the five of you and your vision. I think that as Wellsville continues to grow and, and you'd have a better feel for me, Christie, on when, and I know it's all based on call volume, which in some respects is based on population, but I just suspect a decade from now, um, this is one of those things we'll look back on and think, wow, we're glad we did that then, um, because this is gonna set us up up there for a long time. So I think it's good government. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns on this?
Thank you, Derek. Thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for staff reports. Uh, Derek, you?
Yeah, um, don't have a ton. Um, a week from today, it, it were, it's our intention to, to start talking in more detail about our juvenile detention center and, and where we're at on that. Met with that team yesterday, um, that team being Janet and Ken Halliburton, of course, and Dustin Browning, who's gonna come give you an update shortly, and then Kyle Laswell. Um, continue to have productive discussions on that. Um, continue to work on our budget. That's, that's going well. So we're, certainly we're chugging along and I'm pleased with where we're at, but I would anticipate, um, a week from today, you know, jumping into that, that JDC discussion headfirst. So, um, I don't have anything else. Dustin, do you wanna come up and, and not directly piggyback on that, but?
Sure. Good morning, commissioners. Um, on May 3rd, we received an email from the Kansas Department of Corrections advising us that we were receiving some additional funds that I had mentioned to you at our last, at the last time I visited with you all. Um, the legislature passed a budget for fiscal year 23, which included some fiscal year $22 specifically designed for salary increases for community corrections employees. Um, so we have received those grant funds now. Um, on our adult side, we received 25,329.46. And on our juvenile side, we received 35,312.84. Uh, so what we are doing with these funds, they have to be used in fiscal year 22 for these salary increases. Uh, we are going to give the community corrections staff a one-time supplemental pay increase. And what we have done with that is taken their current pay, uh, and compared it to the proposed pay. Uh, KDOC has done a study on community corrections pay versus the market value. And we found that we are around $5 lower than market value for our starting pay for our positions.
Five dollars per hour.
Per hour, yes. Um, so with these funds, we are going to give that one-time pay with the upcoming paycheck that we receive. And that will spend all of those adult funds, all 25,000, and it will spend some of the juvenile funds, uh, but not quite all of them. What we have been told to expect in fiscal year 23, we have not gotten the final amount yet, but we have been told we can expect four times this amount for the entire fiscal year. Uh, so what we will plan to do, uh, when we receive that amount is implement our pay raise for each of our staff. Uh, so right now we're just doing a one-time supplemental pay increase. Um, and then later on down the road, when we have a concrete number, that's when we'll implement our raises for each of our staff.
And, and can I stop you there just to make it crystal clear? These are additional grant funds from the state, um, which is why we're kind of presenting this to the five of you in this way. The, this, these aren't Franklin County tax dollars. I mean, these are dollars that we would be foolish not to accept because every other eligible county municipality will be taking these. And this will allow us to bring community corrections to a level that's more competitive with court services, which is where we're losing so many of our people too. And what I'm excited about, and one of the reasons I wanted him to talk to you today is this has really interesting implications for our JDC analysis because we know that we're still, regardless of, of how the board wants to proceed, we're still gonna have to do juvenile intake and we're still gonna need staff to do that. Um, and again, to, to, depending on what you wanna do, we were going to have to carry those staffing costs to do those services. Well, these additional grant monies will cover those salaries. And so that potentially adds, I mean, it's a six-figure amount of money that we could potentially save if that's the route that you wanna go. And so that's, I mean, fiscally, that's potentially huge for us. And so, yeah, do you wanna talk a little more about your plans for 23?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
One right in here. Um, so you're talking about giving a amount of money to everybody and I'm thinking, wouldn't it work better if you could hire more staff because you're all so overworked? Um, so how does that happen? Does, will that help you be able to pay more if you, if you can hire more staff?
It would be great if we had more staff. Um, we have currently two vacancies in my department out of a total of nine people. Um, KDOC's recent study also identified that we are two staff members short of where we ought to be, even with those two vacancies. Uh, the problem is when the legislature passes and the governor signed it, it is specifically for salary increases only. It cannot go towards staffing increases. So we are kind of handcuffed in that regard that we have to use this for salary. However, down the road, when we do have some additional funds for staffing increases, our pay will be much more competitive with the market.
And that's a great question and I'm glad you specified that. We literally cannot do anything else with this money. Like, so if you're someone thinking, well, why don't they put that in the general fund or thi, this is it? Like, we are allowed to get a piece of this. We're hoping that we, we get our fair share, but it has got to be used for pay increases for specifically this department, not other county departments, just community corrections. And so really our hands are completely tied.
It's the state saying, we have a problem. We know you have a problem. We're not able to attract or retain, but it's an important service. Here's somebody you, are you gonna use it or not?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Um, so like I mentioned, we are receiving more money on our juvenile side in this, uh, fourth quarter of fiscal year 22. And if we are to expect four times that amount in fiscal year 23, then that does give us some, um, some real leeway with what we do with juvenile services in the upcoming fiscal year. Um, we'll talk about this next week, obviously, but if we were to move around things in our organizational chart, uh, and repurpose some positions, uh, from what's currently split between adult and juvenile services and make one position all adult, for example, and one position all juvenile, um, then we do have that potential to absorb juvenile intake services within community corrections, if that's the direction that we end up going. Uh, and I will say that there are community corrections agencies across the state. Some of them do juvenile intake services. Um, so that is something that we have standards from KDOC, uh, in which we would be able, uh, to incorporate into our agency, if that's the direction that we end up going.
And even before, I mean, long before we were even aware of this additional money, when we started looking into, to this study, i- it, it, it's always made sense to put juvenile intake under community corrections because community corrections currently pays for a portion of juvenile intake. They work closely together. It's always made sense. And now you add the potential fiscal benefits of doing it and it, it just makes, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer really, if that's the direction that the board wants to go with the JDC in general, so.
On the service end of things, I'd give you some continuity too. If somebody goes into, gets in trouble, they're gonna be more or less dealing with the same place, same organization, same people throughout, uh.
Throughout the whole process.
Their process, yeah.
That's a goal of, of mine specifically. Um, I was fortunate enough to attend a site visit in Albuquerque a few years back and they do a model just like that, where when a juvenile's arrested, they're connected with the probation officer immediately. And that officer gets the kid and the family connected with services that they need because obviously there was something going on at that time. And then they work with that youth and that family throughout the process. If they're sentenced to probation, they're still working with them. So that is something that I would like to see and if we could implement that here locally and kind of start that process and maybe even get the state up to speed with something like that, I think that that would be great. Um, if they were sentenced to a lower level of probation court services, for example, then they would go to another agency. But, uh, I think for community corrections to, to kind of spearhead an, an initiative like that, uh, this would be a great opportunity to do it.
My only concern is, is a grant, it's government, it's state money, state can give and state can take away and they have a history of doing that, but.
They do.
Yeah.
They do. And typically we receive, uh, what's called flat funding from year to year. Um, once they give us an amount and they give us that same amount the next year and the next year. And so we have to be pretty mindful when we propose these things about how costs will increase year after year. And so, um, I am running some numbers and we'll have a, a more formal proposal later on, on what that will look like in, in the years ahead.
And, and believe me, I am, we've had that discussion. Um, and, and the only thing we can hope is that they're literally telling us that we have to use it to increase pay. And they've gotta know that when you increase pay, that's not just a one-year thing.
Can't go back.
You can't go back. And so we, we just hope that they have at least that much foresight that, that they plan on keeping this additional.
Right.
Last thing I would say, um, just, you know, I don't give kudos as much as I used to, um, for whatever reason, but, um, Dustin personifies so many of the things I appreciate in a department head. He's ambitious, he's forward-looking and he's clever. Like I, this, um, I, I think that this is a great opportunity for community corrections and in light of what we're talking about next week, I think we have, uh, the potential to do some pretty neat things if that's the direction that the board wants to go. So, so appreciate him and his effort in this process.
We need to take some formal action, say, I don't think it is.
You, you really don't, and that's why I did this in a staff report. We talked about, do we wanna put it on an agenda item? Um, but it doesn't really require, we're just receiving money. Um, and so, um, wanted you to know what is going on, but there's, we're not spending money, we're not entering into any contracts. It's just, it's state money that we're receiving, so. And, and, and any feedback, if moving forward, you'd like to approach this type of thing differently, please let me know, but more than anything, just wanna keep you in the loop.
That sounds good.
All right.
Good deal, Dustin.
It does. Thank you.
Brandon, do you have anything? We didn't get washed out last night or? Okay, Christie, do you have anything else?
I wanted to touch on a little bit also with Wellsville. Um, I've been talking with the police chief up there. He reached out to me. The city's wanting to also, because of their growth, they're also talking about expanding and doing some annexation that will end up taking them just a little bit south of I-35 and that would include picking up some miles of I-35. So he met, um, met with me to, to, to kind of find out where, where we would be as a sheriff's office as far as part of that interstate and everything being in their city. So I do know that they are really looking, um, at a lot of, a lot of growth up there. Um, I know that our call load up in that part of the county has, has increased. So if they would annex more of that area, then it would be, police department would be the primary responders on it. They do help us out a lot, um, in a lot of the subdivisions and a lot of the building that's around that, around the city of Wellsville right now. Cause, uh, as has been mentioned, it is a very fast-growing part of the county. Um, a lot of progress going on up there. Then the last thing that I have that I wanted to mention is that we just completed a promotional selection process for the position of corporal to fill a vacancy in that spot. We had a very competitive process, had some good candidates. Um, ultimately we, um, selected Brightley Rivers and so Brightley will be, um, our newest corporal, um, effective on the, the 21st. Um, one thing that I, um, that I, I think I mentioned it to the administrator, um, and I think the clerk as well, but during our process, um, it was a very competitive process, but these guys, they worked together kind of as a team. They supported each other, they bounced ideas off of each other. One of the things that we do as a requirement during our promotion process is we have them present a project that they believe that it's something that we should do as an organization. And, um, they kind of give us the background as to why they think that's a good idea, how we would do that, how we would implement it and sustain it. And these guys all helped each other out, um, through that and gave ideas. And that's the type of teamwork and, um, the culture that we're, that we've been trying to promote through there. And so it was really good to see, um, that type of process, um, play out. And, uh, so I, I very. And, uh, so I, I'm very, very pleased with how our process went and those guys, uh, we're very proud, very proud of our staff. So, I don't have anything else, but I'd answer any questions that you all may have for me.
Thank you. Dustin? Casey? Christian, I have to apologize, I'm not familiar with the lady next to you. That's how, how much I get around. Thanks for coming in today. Uh, Janet?
Have anything else?
Okay, uh, go ahead, Don. I did attend Wellsville meeting the other night. Same subject we talk about all the time, employee, retention of employees, getting employees. And it's just an ongoing issue. Uh, they did talk about their police building and they're moving forward with that. You know, over that area where this is going, all the other things that are getting ready to happen. A multi-housing, uh, unit over there, strip mall over there, a, uh, a facility for, a recreation facility over there. And so it's all, a lot of things popping on that side of the town. And, uh, they did appointments for all their planning departments and libraries and everybody for the rest of the area. That's all I got.
I just went to a chamber coffee at Cherry Roads Media at the Ottawa Herald office on Friday. Their new owners of the Ottawa Herald, I think they said they own sixty-four newspapers across the United States, several of them in, um, the state of Kansas. And they have big vision. It'll be interesting to see if they can bring, bring it back to at least somewhat what it used to be. I mean, I think we all used to really depend on the newspaper, so. Anyway, they are expanding their staff and their reporting and hopefully, um, it'll be a, a good move for them. I happened to be in the administrative office last week and walked by the conference room and there was new employee orientation and there were several new employees and that's exciting. Uh, I've met a couple of them, a couple of different departments. So it's nice to see that we're, uh, getting some new employees and, um, hopefully that continues. And then the last thing is Erin Laurie from the Health Department has a reception on Friday to honor her. She's been with the county a, a lot of years and so, that's all I have.
The agency on aging meeting this month?
Nothing I feel like need to add?
I had an FCDC meeting last Thursday, uh, Clay Finch, our representative, uh, gave an update from legislature. One of the things they're, uh, going back to session to, uh, discuss, uh, reapportionment, mainly the federal and the state reapportionment. And, uh, he said it was absolutely legal to gerrymander for political reasons, but you couldn't gerrymander for, uh, discrimination reasons. So, anyway, it's in the Supreme Court now of Kansas to decide, uh, how they gerrymandered, uh, districts. Also, he said this summer, there's a, a new break for, uh, childcare services. Uh, Kansas legislature just passed a fifty percent, uh, employer tax credit for, uh, employees' childcare. The company would pay fifty percent of the childcare and, uh, their employer would get a fifty percent tax credit. They had an upper limit on that, but I can't remember what that amount was. So that's a, a little bit of help for these people that are finding childcare to be extremely expensive. Yeah, that, that was the main two things, uh, just said they made progress at Proximity Park. There's a lot, a lot of inquiries about, uh, Proximity Park. Not only through the, uh, uh, state commerce commission, but also, uh, other inquiries about the possibility because of the mega projects that are possibly coming into Kansas, the one billion dollar plus projects have ancillary, uh, support. People looking, uh, all around the locations where these bi- these big plants would be going in for supporting these big plants. That's why there's been a lot more inquiries about Proximity Park. And they, of course, got the base grant to improve, uh, getting gas service out there to the park and also the water to go around there at the park. So, that is going and also, uh, albeit didn't mention, uh, developments up there. Wellsville, what's going on up there in Wellsville? And last night I went to the EK and more meeting and, uh, we talked about, uh, employee, employees', uh, stipends for, uh, I guess COVID, uh, response. They're gonna do the same, uh, help their employees during that period of time also. Stipends for, uh, that period of time. They're also getting a lot more money for weatherization projects, uh. State's getting about thirty-six million dollars for weatherization. EK's share is gonna be about seven, seven million dollars over a five-year period of time for weatherizations. And EK currently has, uh, fifty-four, uh, properties that they have available for their programs. They'd be using, uh, debt grant money for weatherization projects. And they're also rebranding, uh, EK as another one of their projects and, and reestablishing and reaffirming, uh, their primary, um, functions as a community action, uh, program. That's, uh, about all they have, that's, uh, anybody else have anything? We do have a mixed meeting on May twenty-fifth. May thirtieth is, of course, Memorial Day and that, that, uh, study session's gonna be canceled at this time, so. That's all I have, uh, I have a lot to, uh, to share.
Thank you.